We are now in session and for our invocation, we have Reverend Prentice McCollrick from the Senior Pastor from the Thalia Lynn Baptist Church. Welcome.
Would you all pray with me, please? Lord, you're a great and a mighty God who's able to answer all of our needs. And this night, we ask you for wisdom, not the wisdom to do what's expedient, not the wisdom to do what's simply popular, but the wisdom to do what is right. I pray, oh God, that you give us a grace, grace that we can be humble enough to realize sometimes we're not right. The grace to listen to other people and see their point of view. The grace, oh God, to forgive when someone may offend us and to receive forgiveness when we need it. The, Lord, we pray, we pray that you surround this, you surround this with the unity. For we want what is best for our city and we surround that with love. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, do we have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
Okay, uh, can we have the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you certify the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Do I have a motion to certify the informal and formal sessions of March nineteenth, twenty nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you've approved the minutes that's submitted.
Okay, at this point, it's my privilege to make a couple proclamations and I can ask Season Roberts, Executive Director of the Court Appointed Special Advocates to come forward. Hello, welcome. Ah, great. Ah, there we go. It's my pleasure on behalf of council, yeah, come on all of them. Yeah. Okay, whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility that depends on the involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources, without coping skills. And whereas the majority of child abuses cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable and in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas all citizens should be involved in supporting families and raising their children in a safe nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among families, social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies and the business community. And whereas Virginia Beach Court Appointed Special Advocates CASA is hosting its Pin Wheels for Prevention campaign to coincide with the National Abuse Prevention Month activities. And whereas community volunteers have planted three thousand pinwheels on the lawn of Juvenile Domestic Relations Court to present the number of children served by the Virginia Beach CASA office over the past ten years. Therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim April twenty nineteen Child Abuse Prevention Month. Thank you. Here we go. Thank you. And please accept this proclamation on behalf of the grateful citizens. Thank you. If you'd like to make your comment?
I would.
Sure.
In the microphone?
Yes.
I come from church, so that's pretty simple for me. But no, we, um, here at Virginia Beach CASA, CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. We are so delighted that we have a city who partners with us to make sure that our community's most vulnerable children end up in a safe, permanent home. So last year was about seven thousand hours that about eighty volunteers contributed to make sure that the kids would not continue to be abused. And it can only happen because we have the support of a great city council, great city leaders and business leaders. So thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. And now we have another proclamation with the Jolene Saunders. Please come up and accept this proclamation. Come on up, please, the whole crew. Whereas the United States Census Bureau is required by Article One, Section Two of the United States Constitution to conduct a count of the nation's population every ten years. And the Census Bureau declares that that an accurate count is vital to our residents' well-being, our community and our democracy. And whereas the census is the best opportunity to achieve the accurate and complete count of the city's growing and changing population that helps planners determine where to locate schools, roads, hospitals and other facilities. And whereas six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars per year in federal and state funding is allocated to communities based in part on census data. And whereas census data helps determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives and is used for the redistricting of state legislatures, county and city councils and voting districts. And whereas the twenty twenty census data is vital for stimulating economic development and creating jobs in Virginia Beach. Whereas the census information is confidential and protected by law. And whereas the City of Virginia Beach continues a distinguished history of supporting a complete count, is hereby establishing a Complete Count Committee. And whereas Governor Ralph Northam has established the Virginia Beach Complete Count Commission to collaborate with the community partners and local complete count committees to ensure an accurate twenty twenty census count. Therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim the City of Virginia Beach is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau to help ensure a full and accurate count in twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your hard work. Thank you so much. Again, we're so grateful to be here. Virginia Beach is well ahead of the game and more so than a lot of other cities. And thanks so much to the incredible staff that you have here. And it's what I'm just making, just say once more time, one more time, that for every person that does not fill out their census form, roughly about two thousand dollars is not coming back into the community. So it's vitally important to make sure that every single person fills out their census form. So we're one year away, April first, twenty twenty. Fingers crossed, we're gonna, we're gonna do a great job here in Virginia Beach.
We, we appreciate your efforts on behalf of our city and our country. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next, a public hearing on the Lisa City property, Old Coast Guard Station, Twenty Fourth Street and Atlantic Avenue.
No speaker, sir.
Okay, that being said, we'll move forward with the consent agenda. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, a move for approval on the consent agenda. The following items, item J. One, resolution to direct the city manager to consider Opportunity Zones as a major factor in capital improvement program, and that's consent for indefinite deferral. Item J. Two, resolution to establish twelve percent aspirational goal, Ray, minority-owned business participation in city contracts. Item Three, resolution to dissolve the Virginia Beach Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team and thank the members for their service. Item Four, resolution to add a member to the Virginia Beach Community Policy Management Team regarding Representative of the Tidewater Youth Services Commission. Item Five, ordinance to convert two part-time positions to one full-time position regarding Police Department for the Animal Care and Adoption Center and transfer corresponding positions from part-time to full-time budget unit, noting that Mr. Moss is voting no on that item. Item Six, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute an amended and restated agreement between the City and Virginia Aquarium and Marine Science Center Foundation Incorporated regarding clarify responsibilities of the parties, provision of support staff, routine repair and maintenance disposition of revenue, identifies the location of property utilized for the adventure part. Item Seven, ordinance to adopt the twenty nineteen Housing Choice Voucher Annual Agency Plan, including a revised administrative plan and authorize the city manager to execute and submit the plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Item Eight, ordinance to extend the date for satisfying the conditions regarding closure of an unapproved portion of Singleton Way, South Witch Duck and Princess Anne Roads. Item Ten, A, thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars appropriated to Blackwater Volunteer Rescue Squad, Ray, interest-free loan to purchase replacement ambulance with required equipment. B, appropriate three hundred thousand dollars to Virginia Beach Volunteer Rescue Squad Incorporated regarding interest-free loan to purchase two replacement ambulances. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor.
Mr. Moss, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to explain my no vote. We are ninety days away from the new budget. I didn't find the city manager's reasoning compelling in order to circumvent the budget just ninety days away to make an adjustment this late in this year's budget, and I voted no accordingly.
Okay, thank you. All righty, at this point, I want to remind everybody that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives or groups to speak for ten minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address and telephone number to the clerk of record. Okay? So at this point, I guess ordinance nine, to authorize city manager to execute an agreement with the Virginia Beach School Board. Ray, use of school buses during Something in the Water Festival and appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand in estimated reimbursements. Do we have any speakers?
We do not, sir.
Okay.
I'm gonna do a presentation.
Okay, we have a present? Yes, Mr. Hanson.
I was asked to address this, and so may I please speak from my position here with my notes in front of me?
Yes.
Is that acceptable? I appreciate that. Mayor, members of council, viewing public, I appreciate the opportunity to engage in discussion about Something in the Water. In October, last fall, we had an opportunity to meet with Pharrell Williams in a sit-down conversation. He came to Virginia Beach. He wanted to meet with the city manager and deputy city managers. He wanted to have a discussion about what College Beach Weekend was about and how he might be able to return to his home city and become a part of making this something more important, more inclusive, more welcoming and, and, and more futuristic to, for the City of Virginia Beach and for the, for the youth and citizens that live here. Our conversation was extensive. It lasted well over two hours. And that conversation was about how he might be able to, through his popularity and through his influence, be able to assist the City of Virginia Beach in making it a festival. And he proceeded to describe for me and the leaders and, and I believe there were Councilman Davenport happened to have been in attendance at that time at an invite by the person who held that, that meeting to, to describe for me his vision of what a festival was. A festival that was not just a three-day event, but something that would be year-round. And he explained to me what Something in the Water meant to him and how all the artistry and the athleticism that emerges from, from the region here in Hampton Roads. And that a friend of his, Allen Iverson, made a comment once that he overheard and said, "It must be Something in the Water." And he, stuck with him as a, as a much younger person than he is today. And so he believes that Something in the Water is certainly something more than just a three-day festival. And he made an impression such on me that I saw it as an exclamation mark. And that the dot at the bottom of the exclamation mark is that festival. It's that, it's that accentuation, that culmination on an annual basis of music and, and culture and technology and athletics and, and getting out folks to the beach to see what a marvelous place Virginia Beach has become and how the potential of what Virginia Beach could continue to be in helping us be that preferred coastal city on the East Coast of the United States. And so what he also explained to me was that exclamation mark, that's Dave's vision. He didn't say it was an exclamation mark. But the reason why I have that picture is because he talked about the year-round contribution that such an endeavor is going to provide. Provide opportunities to, to nonprofit organizations, provide opportunities for other entrepreneurs, artists, concerned citizens, businesses that want to get involved to contribute to the betterment, the wellness of Virginia Beach year-round. And for those that were not going to be able to actually pile into the, the dot at the bottom of the exclamation mark, that festival, folks would be able to make a difference throughout the year. And so from October to, to early January, end of December, Mr. Williams worked diligently through his contacts because our agreement was if you can deliver that festival that you envisioned, where the centers of gravity are located in our convention center for mentors and, and designers and thought, thought-makers could come forth and have discussions on a platform for our students and our citizens to hear, as well as new releases in technology or artistry and the other center of gravity taking place on the beach where music is the noise for this, for this festival, for this thought of Something in the Water. And so I made a deal with Mr. Williams and Pharrell, if you could deliver that then we would work diligently to take all those resources that we have worked for well over six years in a row to support College Beach Weekend and try to keep it as safe as it could be and to provide a, as welcoming an, an environment as we could possibly provide. And so we were fully committed to partnering with Pharrell Williams if he could deliver that. And so lo and behold, he was motivated and he has moved forward in, in the most robust and unbridled fashion to deliver this experience, something unlike anything that we have ever seen or anything that we have ever had an opportunity to dream of. And he's been able to bring that brand awareness. He's been able to bring that artistry and all those names that want to come and be a part of this. And he's receiving huge financial support from some of the largest companies in the world to be a part of this because they too have now seen the vision of what Virginia Beach could potentially be in a cultural, in a, in a welcoming and inclusive type of manner. And so it takes a lot to, to deliver an amazing experience that Something in the Water is projected to be. Certainly, we know of the ticket sales and the, the quick sellout that happened of the first twenty-five thousand and then an additive ten thousand to get to thirty-five thousand. They're being forthright with one of the highest and most efficient production team I've ever seen in my life come together. And they're, they're, they're taking the city staff and collaborating with them and presenting them with concepts that we really have not had the experience to engage with such an international team of festival producers that do this around the world. And so they have looked at the geographics of Virginia Beach. They've interacted with all our public safety and our marketing personnel. They've looked at our Convention and Visitors Bureau. They've met with the Hotel Association, the Restaurant Association. And they have, they have assessed the scenario of what Virginia Beach could be. And so with the direction from their benefactor, Mr. Pharrell Williams and the agencies that are supporting them and the brands that are contributing to the financial investment necessary to do this, they are working diligently to provide an experience unlike anything that we have experienced here in Virginia Beach. Many aspects to providing the public safety, the visitor's safety are well underway. And as we now know, here in the first days of April, we are inside four weeks before delivering that event. And we are engaged in, in many conversations. And so two and a half weeks ago, I was approached to have a discussion about transportation. Because we all know that our beach has a limited capacity for thousands of cars to enter that area and have any opportunity to find parking or to find a place that they can safely park their vehicles and then attend events located at the beach, be it the Fourth of July, be it the Patriotic Festival, be it the American Music Festival, some of our major events that we've had. But so what I was asked is to take a look at whether or not we would be willing to assist them in the shuttle transportation of our public, of our, of our folks from Centerville and Kempsville and Great Neck and Bayside who, who understand that parking and know that you don't want to get, you know, parked down at the beach and have an opportunity to go to a satellite parking and to have a shuttle to the beach so that they can partake in the, in the conversations at the convention center or the activations of Sony in the parking lot or, or the potential for pop-up Sunday service church next to the existing pier or to attend the concerts that are planned both Friday and Saturday and Sunday evenings. And so I reflected on that for several days. And there's a lot of optics about asking the city to put forth a public asset in the name of public school buses to provide shuttle service for our, the, for our citizens and our visitors to go to, to this inaugural event that we have no idea what history will tell us. But when you look at South by Southwest, that goes on every year in Austin, it is a year-round event that, that businesses and sponsors and advocates are putting their, their, their financial, their, their mental and their, their hard-earned efforts towards making the City of Austin better. They're investing in reading programs for their children. They're investing in, in, in cultural programs for their emerging youth. They are partnering with the University of Texas in, in bringing graduates forth in technology and artistry and music and production and video, not to mention design and business. And so I felt that we have an opportunity to partner with our school district who will benefit greatly from what Something in the Water might become in the year to, to, in the years that will take place between the festivals that are the dot in the exclamation mark. And I, and I talked with the, I talked with the superintendent and I, and I told him that what I had been asked to consider. And I said, you know, there's a great opportunity for an asset that, that our public isn't invested in. An asset that we would call upon to evacuate our citizens from the neighborhood should something terrible happen. We would, we would call forth our, our school buses and, and transport our, our citizens to safety. We would support them in other endeavors that might be to the benefit and the future growth of our city. And so I prepared a correspondence requesting support from the School Division to utilize the school buses in support of, of Something in the Water. The request went forth because it requires a public reason to use public school buses. The school board cannot unilaterally issue and send them out to do those things. The city council has to request the use of that public asset from our school division. It has to be requested from the city. The city has to pay all the costs associated with that. And of course, in collaboration with Something in the Water, they of course have more than willing offered to reimburse all costs associated with that. I felt that it would be a great opportunity for, for the schools to contribute to something that might be historical or might provide a future growth that will support the schools as so many overtures have already been made to enhancements to the schools that are in the area associated with Something in the Water and to schools that Pharrell and his associates attended when they were growing up here in the City of Virginia Beach. I thought it was a great opportunity for our school bus drivers to earn overtime. We certainly know that bus drivers don't make a lot of money, but the opportunity to make time and a half throughout the weekend is a great opportunity. Unlike my Public Works Directors, my Public Works operators who look forward to, to earning overtime. And so receiving reimbursement for, for all the costs associated with use of school buses, plus administrative fees, plus overtime, it just made good sense that we, that we go to our own school district rather than reach out to other school districts, not just in Virginia, but in adjoining states. What would that look like if that's the, the shuttle transportation that came forth to Virginia Beach? We had, conversations have been ongoing between the, the staff at the, at the, at the school district, at the School Division to understand what the concept is and to, to let the council know what the magnitude is. We're looking at about seventy school buses. We're looking at seventy school buses to provide a, a, a very timely and efficient service from a parcel of land located at General Booth and Dam Neck that will hold about forty-five hundred cars and will be able to shoot north on General Booth direct to the, to the oceanfront and drop off. We're looking for them to begin somewhere in the five o'clock Friday time period and work into the evening Friday and Saturday to support services and events at the oceanfront. And then Sunday to conclude at about twenty-three hundred, eleven o'clock so that they can clean the buses. The producer of the concerts willing to provide an extra hour of pay for everybody who has to clean their bus and prepare it for school services on Monday. And so there's a lot going into Something in the Water. Transportation efficiency is certainly critical and this is the reason why I've requested the council consider this ordinance.
Oh, thank you. And this is an exciting, but it's a very unique opportunity. And before I call for a motion on this, I think we should open it up for discussion. So for, you know, for clarification purposes and, you know, so we show the public that we're vetting this very properly. Mr. Moss?
Yeah, this is a question for the city attorney. Since you're the one that certified this document along with the Budget Management Services. It references that the city council hereby authorizes a city manager or designated to execute an agreement with the Virginia Beach School Board. And it references State Code twenty-two point one dash eighty-two, Code of Virginia, and Policy seven fifty-two. When you turn to the page that constitutes the state statute twenty-two point one dash one eighty-two, it says the school board of any subdivision. If you read through that whole paragraph, you never see the word superintendent. If you turn to the Policy seven dash fifty-two under contractual arrangements that clearly states that the school board shall enter into a written agreement. I've yet to see a motion and a vote by the school board. I've yet to see a I've yet to see a codified voted request from the school board. I've heard of conversations with the superintendent, but I have provided no in this packet. All that we have in here says that this agreement is with the school board. And it says here specifically, the school board shall enter into a written agreement. It makes no provision for delegation to someone else. And so I'm curious, since both places vest this authority with the school board, where is the policy or the vote or the documentation which says the school board, not inconsistent with this law, has delegated that authority to the superintendent? Where is that?
I'm not saying that that is in the matter before you. All you're being asked to do is approve this from the council entering into the agreement or the manager entering into the agreement on behalf of the council.
But yes, but he's saying that we're going to execute this agreement with the Virginia Beach School Board. There has been no vote by the school board saying that they will honor our request.
The school board will have to take whatever action is appropriate for them to authorize their counterpart, the superintendent, to enter into this agreement. And if that doesn't happen, if both parties don't lawfully execute the agreement, then the agreement won't occur.
Well, generally speaking, my experience has been that the superior body first says they're willing to do it before we request it. That seems kind of out of order. So I'm kind of asking, I guess we had some conversation with the superintendent. Does he think he's approved this or does this?
No, absolutely not, Mr. Moss. What he has asked for me to do is provide a proved action by the city council that we are requesting use of the school buses for this purpose.
When you read through this justification background and considerations, you will not find any reference that this would have to go be voted on and be approved by the school board before it could be executed. You will not find that expression in this information. But is your understanding that the school board will actually have to hear and vote on it just like we are?
My expectation would be that in some form or fashion, the school board will have to authorize the execution of the agreement.
Well, it would be.
Whatever policy they follow is the policy that they follow. And I'm not offering you an opinion as to what their policy or practice is over there. But the body, the school board is the body that by statute enters into the agreement through the execution of their duly authorized subordinate, who in this case I assume would be the superintendent.
Right. So just so the public knows and my council members know, that information and that process was not outlined in the information that we received. And the other part I want to make point of, it's important to know, is at the bottom of considerations, to wit, the city will self-insure up to $450,000 for damages to any school bus. That's not being patented. I didn't see where that was subject to reimbursement. And if the liability exceeds $2 million, the city would use its surplus policy. So I guess my question is, is that subject, in the fact that those conditions exist, is that subject to reimbursement by the promoters?
If that's so, the position of the council, we can put that in the ordinance.
Well, I'm just making sure people know. And I don't think the public wants to take on any liability. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. That's my only question.
Ms. Henley?
I had that same question about liability because the way this reads, it talks about the other reimbursements, but that seems to come to the city. And I certainly would want to make sure any liability would be covered by these other folks and it's not going to be the city's liability. Because we've got 70 buses out there, any damage at all. I mean, the city could wind up being pretty liable for a whole lot. But I appreciate all of this background and I've been a supporter of this event. And I hope it turns out well. If it turns out well, it will be a really great event. If anything goes wrong, the buck stops here. And that's why I think we really have the responsibility of making certain it's going to be a safe, successful event. And therefore, you know, I was a little concerned that all of this is coming to us at the very last minute because maybe there has been a lot of talking going on, but it hasn't come from this body. And I think we really are responsible for whatever happens, especially if it happens to be not successful or in some way has a problem. And I really, until I just read the article today and asked, well, where is this event going to be? I didn't know where it was going to be, a place that would park 4,500 cars. General Booth and Dam Neck and Oceana intersection happens to be one of the most congested, most accident-prone areas we've got in the city. I just don't think that's a good place for 4,500 cars to be parked at one time. And I guess they're going to be going and coming for the weekend. I'm just saying that I think that's the wrong place. I don't think that's a good place at all. And I'm really worried that, you know, as long as we were talking about, you know, the event down at the convention center and the beach and so forth, but this seems now to be consuming the whole city. And I'm not sure we're up to that quite yet. I think coming, we thought this was the first year to try something and then we could work into it. But, you know, here we are suddenly thinking that, well, we're not going to have enough places to park at the beach. We're going to have to have them parked up there at Dam Neck and Oceana and all of these additional people. I'm worried that we are exceeding our capacity. If these buses aren't going to get back until 11:00 PM on Sunday, there's no way in the world they can be disinfected and cleaned to make that 6:30 run in the morning. I don't know how this logistically is going to work. If there are no tickets, if all the tickets have been sold, where are all of these people going to go? I worry about that. And then I think the icing on the cake was this knowledge that we found this morning that people are being encouraged to begin designating their homes as Airbnb so they can make a lot of extra money and provide places for people to stay since the hotels are apparently filled up. Airbnb then, if we're doing it this way, could happen in any neighborhood in the city. I think our experience, the tragic experience with Airbnb has already occurred on this weekend. I don't want to see it repeated. I'm really worried that we are rapidly exceeding our capacity and our ability to handle this as I think it started out to be. It started out to sound really good, but I've just got to say I'm getting worried.
Anybody else? Jess?
I think John and Barbara have kind of said a lot of what I was worried about, too. I've been following, one of the news outlets posted a poll asking whether or not the public was in favor or opposed to us utilizing their school buses. And when I checked on it before we came right in here, it was pretty much a 50/50 split. And so the public is pretty divided. But what kind of took me back is I had 7,400 people participate in that poll. And what bothers me the most is that apparently there's leadership that was aware of this issue three weeks ago. And I never received any kind of brief saying that we were going to use school buses. And I want to see this successful. This is, I think, a really great, has a lot of great potential. But now I feel like my vote is being held hostage because we didn't have adequate time to gather information, to go out to the public, to say, this is what it is, this is what it isn't. And then on top of that, be advocates for it and say, no, we've got this, we're going to be okay, this is going to go off without a hitch. And not to mention, we've got Netflix documentary talking about how terrible some of these festivals end up being. And that if you go on any thread on social media, that's what people are referencing. And I echo the sentiment that I am worried as well, but I want this to be successful. And with all that said, I mean, the question I have for the city manager is, if we're going to be running these buses to 11:00 PM, are the bus drivers going to be in a state that they can then go to work Monday morning to take kids to school? And on top of that, what are we doing to ensure that the bus drivers remain safe when running these routes in the evening when people are coming back presumably having had a good time? And I just want to make sure because the information I got from bus drivers is that they're supportive of earning their time and a half and that they love the opportunity to make more money. But we've got to be diligent in how we do to make sure that they stay safe and that the kids who get on the bus the next morning remain safe. So my two questions were, what are we doing about the drivers that are driving the next morning? And what is the security measures going to be for making sure that the drivers remain safe and the other passengers for that matter?
Yes, ma'am. So I'm fairly confident that the management team at schools will watch the hours that they're allowing their employees to work. It's not unlike us when we run overtime with our public safety individuals or anybody else that we ask to do extended shifts. I believe that they will certainly take a look at who's going to be working up until Sunday at 11:00 and give it an hour to take their bus back to their parking spot. The consensus of the operators is they like to clean their own bus, they maintain their own bus. So they are going to get paid an extra hour to clean up any mess that they've got in their bus and have it prepared for the next day. I think we need to understand that there will be a large security element at the parking area where they are performing pickup. And there will be security at the locations at the beach where they're going to load and shuttle back. There'll be lanes open for emergency vehicles and the shuttle buses on General Booth between the ocean front and that parking area that they're going to be picking them up or dropping them off. There is onboard interior video located on every one of those buses. There will be placards to notify them that they cannot smoke and they can't be drinking and bringing stuff onto the bus to make sure that people understand that. There'll be security there as they load to make sure that they have the proper wristbands and everything, RFIDs, et cetera, to get on the buses. They will have radio communication with the producers and with public safety. So if an incident happens to occur on that shuttle route, and there will be significant public safety along that route to ensure that folks are obeying the speed limit and they're traveling and that the shuttles are given access to get to and from the beach.
So we're presumably going to have a bus driver get done at 11, clean till midnight, and then run a route at 4:00 in the morning?
I'm not saying that bus driver is the one that's... I don't believe all bus drivers are on duty that at 4:00 in the morning. So I'm sure they're going to give us specificity. We've been told they are not to work past 11. I'm sure they're going to look at how many shuttle drivers come on duty at, maybe not with the high schoolers that go in the first shift, but maybe they have the second shift or they're working the middle schoolers at the third shift. I'm not familiar with how they are going to do that. It's not something that, you know, in my purview. They will tell us what they can provide.
Okay, John?
On Thursday, when we got our agenda packet last Thursday, not the packet, but just the summary the city clerk has so nice to provide us, I saw this on there and I thought, what is this? I'd never heard of this before, mimicking Jessica's The First View. So I sketched a little e-note, emailed the deputy city manager, Ron Williams, to ask him just what is this and are we paying, who's paying. So then I found out that, A, it's reimbursable, so that took one concern off my mind, but no details, nothing about how they're going to park or anything. Then I got several calls from school board members on Friday. They're hearing of it the first time. I don't know how favorably this is going to be received based on the few phone calls I've received because they expressed the same concerns. And I don't know how they track the CLT, you know, the commercial, they have those Department of Transportation licenses, they can only drive so much in a day, then they got to have eight hours rest. They got to manage all of that. But the interesting thing is, no one has talked about that with the school board members. They don't know anything about all this. They know about as much as we do. No one's talked about the details, so I don't know who possesses them, but no one's sharing them. And I'm not saying it can't work, but to a point that we've often made, we seem to be the people who are accountable with making the decision and we're the last to know that the decision need to be made and the details, and we're running up against the clock. And this just seems like the bad way to run a railroad. And I don't know if many of you feel as uncomfortable as I do that we're hearing all this for the first time, except when we got in our packet and read our packet and got the memo about the parking lot. But the public doesn't hear all that. So we're dealing with the people on the phone, the parents, school board members are calling to ask me, what information do I have? So I just take photos with my phone and send it to them. Because that's the quickest way for them to get it. But my point being is, I don't know what representations the superintendent may or may not have made that led us to believe this was something that would be favorably received. All I can say is that the school board members were as unaware of this issue as we were as the weekend occurred. And I think that you can probably sense the frustration that we're having because of that. And then to be accountable and making last-minute changes here at the dais isn't the best way to vote on something. And that's just... But I am concerned about, it's the school board's issue in part, but ultimately, who is the underwriter for any liability that they incur? It's us. So there's no running away from it's the school board watching it because in the end, it's us as a council and then the taxpayers in the event that there's something untoward happens and we don't get the liability worked out right, which I'm sure with the city attorney manager we can. But we're making that adjustment as we speak. I just don't think it's the right way to proceed it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moss. Rosemary?
So it's my understanding that this is a two-step process. If we approve this, then the school board has to approve it. Is that...
They don't have to do anything. They don't have to approve it. They will consider it and they will set some parameters. If they do approve it, they'll set some parameters back to us that this is what they can offer.
Then we have to vote on it again?
No, you would give me permission to execute that agreement with the schools.
Well, the only way I would vote yes on this is if the promoter assumes all liability.
I've written that down.
Jim?
Yeah, I was going to say something very similar to that, that we'd want at a minimum the promoter to have evidence of liability policy that's acceptable to city risk management, excuse me, that would cover the city for 100% liability. The other thing frankly is, in my opinion, for me to support this, they'd have to stop use no later than 7:00 PM on Sunday. And I think that maybe even that's too late. But I am extremely concerned about overtired bus drivers. And that was not an issue that I thought about before until I heard it earlier today, is the fact that, you know, you've got these runs starting very early in the morning. And so I'd like to see, you know, for me to support it, I'd like to see it in that format, that it's cut off no later than 7:00. And that way the bus drivers are going to have, you know, an opportunity to get eight hours of sleep like they should and go from there. And then, you know, obviously the liability issue. So that's where I am on this.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Yeah, Jess?
I agree about the liability portion, but I'm not sure, I mean, would we, I'm not sure the operator could find a liability policy for school buses that are not owned. I would imagine, I think we need to probably say that they need to either find a liability policy or self-insure up to a certain threshold because I'm not confident that there is a commercial policy out there for that use.
I think you get insurance for everything, it's just how much you want to pay for.
There are definitely limits to that.
I liked what Jim said, though.
Yeah, Ms. Henley?
Well, could we have a briefing next week on the status of all of this? I mean, you talk about an awful lot of security, but I'm seeing our police department getting pretty thin here with a whole city to cover. You know, we've sort of not been kept up on all of this stuff. And I think at the very least, we have to have a briefing each week to give us exactly what the plans are and exactly how it's going to be handled. Because again, this is where the buck stops. And I think there are a lot of questions.
Anybody else at this point? Yeah, let me just say, and I truly appreciate, you know, the tenor of this discussion bringing it forward. And one of the things is, I think this event has grown exponentially in popularity and it really resonated and it's a growing thing. And it's the first time for us, but this is an opportunity that could really, has the strong potential to put Virginia Beach on, you know, the map in a very positive way to help us with economic development and other things. But once again, this is the first time. And like anything else, you know, there's... And like anything else, you know, there's going to be some growing pains and there'll be, you know, perhaps some mistakes made, but we can learn from those going forward. I think if we look at the intent of what we're trying to do here is to create that positive culture at the oceanfront that even the people that live in Virginia Beach want to come back to their beach. And to have this more of a year-round thing, to actually change the culture out there, to warm this. And we never want to have the perception that we do not welcome anybody that comes to the city of Virginia Beach. So I really, truly see this as an opportunity. And the fact that Mr. Williams is stepping forward and, you know, this is going to be a learning curve, you know, for us going forward. And especially if we can have this as a year-round event that everybody looks forward to. But not only that, but also that it maybe transcends to all the other weekends, every weekend at the beach, you know, that we can do these things. Now, we're a resort community. We have some experience with the Shamrock Marathon and other events out there with, you know, Neptune Festival and everything, you know. And I have confidence in our police, but being in some of the preliminary meetings, you know, months ago, you know, we're talking about a very sophisticated group of professionals that are coming in with their own security that are going to augment what we do. And, you know, this is just an opportunity that we must embrace, but I think by using the school buses, you know, it's better to overplan a little bit with logistics because, you know, some of the devil in the details are there going to be the transportation and backups and everything, so if we can possibly do something to mitigate that. But the thing is, we're going to pray for a successful weekend. But going forward, after the weekend, you know, we're going to probably sit down, have a debriefing and figure out what went right and where do we have to improve. But I'm glad that we had the discussion to talk about liability and about the fatigue of the drivers and some of the other things, and I appreciate the discussion that we had here. Okay? With that being said, do we have a motion?
Well, I mean, I'll move approval with the condition that the buses are not used past 7:00 PM on Sunday, that to some degree, whether it's the reliability policy or some other method acceptable to city risk management, that there's evidence that there's full indemnification of liability, again, for the city and no cost to the city, and that there's a positive vote of the school board.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable.
Any other discussion?
I would just say that I hope that asking questions and expressing concern isn't taken as being non-welcoming. I think it's important that we fulfill our responsibility and that is to all 450,000-plus citizens of Virginia Beach. And, you know, yes, we want this to be successful, but if these concerns that I think we've expressed tonight really do need to be addressed, or we are not doing our job. And it's not a matter of not being welcoming, it's a matter of wanting it to be successful and not wanting issues that are pretty obvious could go in the wrong direction.
And I agree with Mrs. Henley, you know, and I truly appreciate the discussion we had here at the dais. And Mr. Hanson, it may not be a bad idea up until the event, as Mrs. Henley recommended, that at least we have some weekly briefings on, you know, what's going on. So this way, we'll not be only ones brief what's going on, and this way, the public will know what's going on concurrently.
Yes, sir. Okay. Okay. At this point, the vote's open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the resolution as stated from the dais.
Okay. Thank you all very much. I appreciate the conversation. Okay, open a public hearing on planning, and then we're going to hear Clear Creek Holdings LLC conditional change of zoning from R-10 residential to I-1 light industrial to conditional I-1 light industrial at a vacant parcel of South Birdneck Road.
First speaker is Eddie Burdon.
Hey, how are you?
Vice Mayor Wood, doing well, thank you. Honorable members of council, the clerk's passing around.
You're not good, they wanted to hear.
Take my... Stop the clock.
You just weren't as excited.
Anybody want to get the... The... I'm passing around the easement that was taken on the property by the Department of Navy in 1983, the United States government, which I'll talk about in a minute. For the record, my name's Eddie Burdon, I'm a Virginia attorney, and it's my privilege to come before the council this evening representing Clear Creek Holding LLC, excuse me, and its principal, Mr. Larry Kurtz, who is again with us this evening. This is a proposal on a 4.3 acre, 38 acre parcel on the west side of Birdneck Road that is currently zoned 80% light industrial, I-1 unconditional, which permits any number of uses by right, including the one that is the subject of this application. And then 20% of that subject property is zoned R-10, which is for residential use, but the property is not able to be used for any residential use. This is an application for, a proffered application for an industrial flex space, C-TAC Business Center for Small Businesses, excuse me. The use is one that is already present on the west side of Birdneck Road and a couple of other locations. The application comes to you this evening with a recommendation for approval by your planning staff and a unanimous recommendation by the Planning Commission. It's been reviewed by the Department of the Navy and they agree that it is a compatible use, one that is permitted under their easements. The use is consistent with your comprehensive land use plan and it is consistent with the city's agreement with the Department of the Navy, the memorandum of understanding. From a historical perspective, the Kurtz family purchased this property, it was a little bit larger at the time, Birdneck Road right of way has been widened since and some property was taken off the front. But the property was purchased 55 years ago in 1964. It was zoned R-5, which was the precursor to the current R-10 residential 10,000 square foot lots. And at the time they purchased the property 55 years ago, there was no residents on this property. There has not been a residence on this property since they purchased it, and there hadn't been one on there for a number of years before they purchased the property. In 1983, the Department of the Navy, US government, under threat of condemnation, acquired the grant of easement that you have in front of you. That document restricts the use of the property, prohibits its use for residential purposes. The number of years later, next comprehensive plan adoption after that, taken by the Navy, and again, it was a conveyance, but it was under threat of condemnation, the city rezoned the 80% of the property to unconditional I-1 light industrial. The reason we're here is to rezone the front part to match the back and to proffer a specific plan of development, which in and of itself eliminates quite a number of the permitted uses on the property, that is, part of the property is I-1 today. We've also added prohibitions of an automobile service station, vehicle repair garage, and self-storage facility, uses that are either allowed by right or with a conditional use permit. And the simple development of the property, the simple plan that's proffered also would preclude a lot of other allowable industrial uses. There, adjacent to the property is the city's animal shelter and the currently developing project that the Spitzers are doing, that you all are very familiar with, and they have nothing but support for this application. There is, there are no residences adjacent to this property. There are no residences across Birdneck Road from this property, directly in front of the property. The application is one that frankly is, just simply makes common sense. My clients have had this property for 55 years and it's been sitting there. They've done nothing with it other than pay taxes. They're proposing a use that I've said is absolutely consistent with our comprehensive plan. Two weeks ago, we deferred this application after the full hearing in order to add the restrictions that we discussed that I just mentioned, no self-storage facilities, no vehicle repair garages or auto service stations, and retail uses are not allowed under either the I-1 zoning district or under the restrictions the Navy has that you have a copy of in front of you. In short, this comes with every recommendation we could have. We apologize for not having gone to the C-TAC Civic League initially. I do appreciate their hospitality, meeting with us, discussing with us, and gaining understanding of what this is and what this is not. And lastly, I'll say this is not in conflict with the suburban focus area as there is no suburban housing on this side of Birdneck Road in the vicinity of this piece of property, nor can there be, because the property that is adjacent to us and undeveloped to the north of us is also zoned I-1 light industrial, except a small portion at the front of the property. And the reason for that, one could argue from the perspective of the community, is to make sure that they know what's going to be put there, at least on the front part of the property. You've got a landscape plan, you've got an excellent plan of development with more than ample parking and meets stormwater requirements. We have to go through a full site plan review, obviously, but we've done what we indicated that we would do. We appreciate the Civic League's meeting with us. We're more than happy to continue a dialogue and think we've established a good relationship moving forward. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
John?
I just have one, and I apologize, I didn't ask it before, so.
I hope I'm not stumped by it.
Mr. Burdon, can you, besides your just oral representation, do you have anything that can confirm and validate the statement that there was no residential structure on that parcel at the time that the easement was entered into?
Mr. Kurtz can do so. That's, you know, he has owned the property, his parents owned it before him, he was the owner when the easement was taken, his parents owned it from '64. He can, and I'm quite certain the Department of the Navy can as well. But I just heard about that question on the way down here this evening, so I don't have any...
Always hard, you know, to look at the actual organic document. And it does make a reference to an exception, but I only have your oral representation that there was no structure there in 1983.
We have no aversion to, you know, the city staff, you know, looking into it, checking with the Department of the Navy. My client, I'm happy to bring him up here to tell you that there wasn't a house on it. But, and that's a standard provision because, as you well...
You're a little spoiler plate, I understand.
And they put it in there whether there's a house on it or not.
Right. I just, that's just the one thing I...
There has not been a house on the property, there wasn't a house on the property. Well, I say, there is, there, my client told me, there is evidence that somewhere back in probably the '30s and '40s, there might have been, but there's...
That wouldn't be relevant to the vision.
Correct. There was nothing on it when they bought it in '64. That's, that would be his testimony, but again, I have no aversion, if you all want to take the time or ask the city attorney to check that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burdon.
Okay. Any other question for Mr. Burdon? Okay, speakers?
Thank you. Yes, the next speaker is Elizabeth Mills. And after Ms. Mills will be Andrew Jackson.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am here today because I am the co-chair of the C-TAC Community Civic League, and she's just here for support. This is Shaska Lewis Bangle, she knows I'm nervous. And she was previously, she's a retired deputy sheriff and she is a member of the Civic League. My family has owned land in C-TAC since 1942. I was born in the house that I live in now. And my concern, I've seen my neighborhood change from the nice, peaceful, friendly residential community that it was to, we don't know what it is anymore. The traffic on Birdneck Road is unbelievable. We are the shortcut to everybody's dream from, I would say, from the interstate all the way to general booth, that's the shortcut, and all the streets now that they're mostly deadened and running to Norfolk Avenue. We can't sleep at night for all the traffic. We're not, we're not used to this. We're a family, we're a family community and very close knit. And we just want peace. And to put another commercial building on Birdneck when they're going to be building that battery factory at the corner of Irish Creek, that's just going to, all those big trucks. We already have in C-TAC two facilities that already do what this homeowner wants, this landowner wants to do. We've seen our land devalued when it should have been raised at its height of construction and new homes. And we just don't get it. We went with the planning committee, we met with them for over a month, and they told us, being a SF3, excuse me, SF9 community, that we wouldn't have to worry about any more construction and commercial buildings in our neighborhood anymore. And we're here every year, the same thing, trying to preserve our neighborhood. We don't want to be an industrial zone. We want to be a residential, family-friendly neighborhood. And we feel like the city of Virginia Beach treats C-TAC like a stepchild. We're everybody's shortcut to everything, and I want to thank you.
John?
Hanson, you have been such a long resident of C-TAC. Do you recall the last time that you can remember when there was a structure on that property?
That land was what we call Tin Can Alley. It was the migrant workers who lived there and then residents took up residence. I can't remember when they towed Tin Can Alley down, but that's what it was.
That been sometime in the '60s or '70s or...
I really can't remember.
All right, well, thank you so much, and appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Next speaker is Andrew Jackson.
Counsel members, mayor, before I start, let me just, you had mentioned that on any topic, if there were other speakers, you would ask for them, that before I start this topic, let me make a comment on the last topic. I had to ask the question, is there something in the water? Because what I hear here is some, is a lot of concern about an event, and we have events here every year. What is it about this event? Is it something in the water? Also, I think I heard Ms. Henley even mention somewhat about a fear of, "We don't want this, what happened before, to happen." I'm concerned when I hear these little tidbits of concern about an event coming here. The fear already is there. Fear of what? Fear of what? Of this city becoming a city like many other cities that have events that benefit the city? Is that what we have a fear of? I'm concerned. Maybe there is something in the water and we may not like what it is. Let's get on with having this city grow up. Let it grow up. I listened to State of the City, and the mayor said something like, "Bring public to the table." I heard him say things like, "This city not just having growth and the citizens being involved and everybody coming together, but to embrace it, to embrace it." That's all I'm going to say. I just wonder, think about what's in the water. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
On the subject of this property, we've talked a lot about this suburban focus area. It's over and over again. And I think the issue is, one, that we have not done at the planning department level what should have been done in terms of going along with this suburban focus area and the comprehensive plan and all those things that come before, because it specifically mentions in there, it encourages meeting with these citizens, residents in particular, and I don't mean just one community, every community ought to be like that. Every person... Every person that had, all of you, are, have some sort of responsibility for districts. Those folks ought to be included when something's coming to their neighborhood. This is, this is a repeat, every single year for C-TAC. Even though we sat, and I think she mentioned a month, no, 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 we sat there for two years, developing that suburban focus area. And I don't know about the folks that are in planning now, but at the last day and minute and second, there was a whole bunch of red lines, we're gonna change stuff about enforcing things. That meeting that took place a couple of weeks ago should have taken place when this thing first came to the planning department. Neighborhood's citizens, well, you said it embraced the citizens. They ought to be involved in what's gonna be in their neighborhood. In this case, we did finally have a meeting. We had a meeting, and there were some, there were some things made in terms of the proffers that are in there, so that, so that we, the neighborhood can be sure that they're not gonna have any more, this land is not gonna be used for storage areas, it's not gonna be a junkyard over there, not gonna have cars and gas stations, and so, that part of it, and I appreciate them sitting down with the community, but there's still some hard feelings there. We understand that this is gonna happen, we understand that the Navy's role in it, we understand the city's role in it, but that's a, that's a historical area. We treat other historical things, I've seen things popping up in the news here lately about historical this and the lighthouse and the rest of it, that's a historical neighborhood. Treat it as a value, rather than just someplace to put something. And I, like I say, I appreciate the owner of the property, I mean, come, come to the Civic League, sit down and talk, and we can some of those things out of the way, but there's some hard feelings there, and those can be prevented if we can get the planning department to do, to take part in what's printed in that suburban focus area and/or in the general plan. Bring cities, bring the citizens of a neighborhood together and say, you know, before we do this, let's, let's, let's look at what that's doing to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All the speakers, Mr. Burdon.
Okay, do we, okay.
He has for bottle.
I want to, I appreciate both the speakers and what they had to say, and I'll repeat what I said two weeks ago. I've been doing this 30 some years, it's, I take the blame, but that doesn't take away from what Mr. Jackson said, as far as the staff letting the neighborhood know. I understood the comp plan suburban focus area, stay away from the east side of this arterial highway where all the homes are, and so I, you know, we've made, we've made up on my air for not meeting sooner with them, with the Civic League, and we, we had a great dialogue, and we'll stand by for any questions. Hope you all follow the recommendations that you have for you.
Okay, thank you. At this point, do we have a motion?
I have motion, no. I'm gonna vote against it, so, you know, I think we had Ms. Mills, who's been a lifelong resident of C-TAC, come up here and speak. She's chairman of the C-TAC Community League, and I believe she speaks for the majority of the members there. Again, C-TAC is a historic community, and year after year after year, their voice hasn't been heard. I don't think they've had proper representation from the Beach District Rep, whoever that sat in that seat for a very long time, and they can tell you themselves how many times Beach District Council members have actually come and visited them. And so to continuously overlook and undermine their word, their say-so, does a disservice to what we're trying to embody here, and that is inclusion within our community, and that your voice, it means something. You know, unfortunately, again, I think the landowner, you know, as far as it goes, that landowner is his land, but it's, again, it's in the historic community, and I think preservation of our community is, should be our number one priority, more particularly this C-TAC area where you have a manufacturing plant coming, you have numerous storage units there already, you have a sports center that's coming online, you have traffic, it's cut through as well, not, not to mention, you have Ocean Breeze Park that's down there that's also traffic closed through there, and to add this, I think it's overbearing, it's overburdened to the community there, so I'm gonna vote no on that.
Is that a motion, Mr. Counselor?
Yes.
I will sec, and out of respect, the council member, I'm gonna second that for, so we can have a discussion. I don't know that I'll support the vote in the end, but I think it's worthy of discussion of the body, and I'm gonna second his motion.
Yeah, I think it's worthy of discussion, too. Okay, we're open for discussion.
Well, I have a question to the staff. Assuming that we don't want to put what's being proposed here on the property, what can go on the property?
Currently, right now, the property at the front, that's zoned residential, has that Navy restricted easement, so we would need to find out information on if there was previously existing a residence on it, to see if that was even available to it.
The applicant has told us that there's, that he's certain there was not a residence on it, so let's, let's forget that issue for right now, and just talk about what can go on this property, considering the restrictions that are on it.
The, as far as the industrial property in the rear, there's a potential, but then there would have to be other development potential to be combined with other properties that are zoned industrial. I don't know if that's available to them right now or not. The residential property zoned to the front is, is the difficult one, because there is a restrictive easement that, that does remove the uses.
Is it, is it restricted to only industrial zoning, or is there some other zoning category that could be put on the property and still meet the restriction with the Navy and so forth?
There are other zonings that are available to them, but it would, they would have to, if they were to go to a business zoning, they would have to proffer that they would not, they, they would have to assure that there is a way for them to not have uses that would, that would conflict with all of our AC use requirements.
So it would be a conditional zoning, right?
It would be a conditional zoning. It would be difficult, because the business uses are greatly limited by our AC use requirements and the restrictive easement that exists on the property. That's why I believe the rear property was zoned industrial, because that was the uses that were available and compatible with the, with the Navy requirements.
I understand that, but I'm still trying to figure out, is if, for instance, obviously the community doesn't want industrial there. So the question is, is there some other kind of uses that could go on the property, that this property could be zoned, rezoned to?
We would have to analyze the easement that we now have the paper copy of, to make a determination, Mr. Jones.
Well, following up on Mr. Jones's question, I mean, I see basically 26 things here that could be on it, but I also see an equal number of things that cannot be on it, based on this document from, from the Navy, and it, I mean, the things that they say that can be on it are parking lots and cemeteries and, and things like that. I guess my concern with this is, and the planning director did a, did a good job of kind of dodging around the question a little bit, but, but there's nothing, I mean frankly, that can be put on the front, based on, if, if in fact, there was no structure there, and the gentleman in the back said it would've been torn down in the 60s, I heard, heard him say that, and, and then the applicant said that there was no, no house there in 1983, so there's nothing that can be built on that front piece. The back piece is, I assume if, if there was access to the street, that would be unrestricted I-1, conditioned that it meets these items, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
So, so if, if there was access, if that R piece wasn't in the front, they wouldn't be coming here unless they wanted to do something that ordinarily required a CUP.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, so it would be a by right zoning.
Yes.
So, so the issue is, is they have a strip in the front that they cannot use, that blocks them from using the piece in the back that they can use. That, that's kind of what I'm seeing here, okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, you know, I have never voted for those other storage units, and I understand by being out in the C-TAC community, and I have been out there into the Civic League meetings, that the people have been, say, so somewhat their property's been cannibalized, I guess that's a nice way of saying it, and I know they're very much concerned about what the 17th Street project means, one more way to take over their neighborhood, and I know they've seen a number of traditionally African-American communities take public funds to put in water and sewer, and next thing you know, they're pushed out, and housing they can't afford gets built. So I, I certainly can appreciate their, their lack of faith in the institutions of government, because they haven't always been on the receiving end, but at the same token, property rights are, some property rights, and sometimes you're, make good choices before, and you're forced into, you can't, if you inversely condemn their property, and I probably shouldn't say that publicly, the city attorney probably give me the evil eye, but in effect, by denying them access to their property, that's what it amounts to, and we know what that's been like, and we end up paying, and if we want to pay, then have nothing there, which I think is ultimately kind of where I thought the vice mayor was saying, what the choices are. Either the choices are, we let the property owner exercise their, their legal rights, or if we deny him, we're committing ourselves to pay damages, because it's inverse condemnation, so he might as well see what he'll, what he'll sell it to us for, and it just becomes vacant, and is that really a good place to have vacant property for the neighborhood? I'm not trying to, but I think that's where we're at, and I, I think ultimately, if we're not, if there isn't a collection here to, say we want to acquire it, then I don't know what choice we have but to, without incurring liability, but to grant the request as the least worst alternative, but I can understand why the people in the community feel like, yeah, but this isn't, there's been a lot of times when you had a choice, and you still gave us the storage unit, and there's lots of those, so I can see why this vote comes across as being very insincere and, and different, when in reality, we're kind of in a, a legal box, and, but this doesn't give us a pass for all the other times when we weren't in a legal box, but we are a nation of laws, not of people, and so therefore, I, I'm gonna, in the end, I, why, why I second the motion to have the discussion, I don't know how I in good faith can do my job to uphold the constitutional laws of the Commonwealth and vote for something that is in effect would be inverse condemnation on the property owner's property. It's a difficult place to be in, but buck stops here, and we're paid to make the tough choices. I just want the public to understand where I'm at, and why I'm coming from that perspective.
Okay, Jess?
I think I agree with a lot of what Councilman Moss said, and I think, I think we as a body should really evaluate what are all our options, and I know that we had had discussion that we would potentially defer this and look at what all possible options could be, and I think, you know, Councilman Rouse is also correct, in that that community does feel very neglected, and, and it's, it's the sentiment that I've heard over and over and over again as well. So I would like to make a substitute motion to defer to the 16th?
16th.
And request the city manager bring us a briefing of what our possible options are, and, and evaluate it then.
Do we have a substitute motion? Do we have a second?
A second. I only have one line of inquiry, if I could just, Mayor?
Sure.
I, I do believe, I just want to make sure everybody knows when they pick the date, I do recall both Council Lady Abbott and Rouse, and they would not be here that week.
I said I would be here that day, not the following day.
Oh, that day. Oh, the following, okay, okay.
We can move, we can move it.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that I, that we didn't, you know, lose track. You're gonna be, you'll be on the Wednesday on, right? Gotcha.
Okay, we, we have a substitute motion to, okay, Rosemary?
Well, the 16th give us time to, I guess, have a little bit of planning and legal to get all of the options and the research done that we're gonna need.
We will have the, the uses put together for you that are available and analyzed, yes.
Make sure, go back and see if there's any structures that have been, and I'm really interested in Tin Can Alley, you know, what exactly that means.
Yes, ma'am.
That was very interesting. Thank you so much for bringing that up. And you ladies, you ladies are so lovely.
He's coming to tell you.
Can we vote?
Okay, now, excuse me, sir.
Let's vote. Okay, come on.
Yeah, yeah.
Briefly.
Yeah, good evening.
That's the Benjamin from C-TAC. Tin Can Alley was from Barrett's, like you see on Goma Power, they were homes where the people was living in, that came, migrated from all across the areas.
Wow.
And they worked their farm and everything else. That place was there when I was a little boy, I'm 64 years old, I remember walking past there in the late 60s, and those buildings were still there at that time.
So there were structures.
There were structures there, and they tore it down eventually.
Would you know anybody who had photographs or old photographs of these things?
Hopefully, I can get some photographs for you, because I know some of the family members that used to live in Tin Can Alley that's yet living. Thank you.
Sir, thank you very much.
Please, thank you so much. If anyone, and, and I know that there was some historical work that's been done, because I, I'm with the Historic Preservation Commission with C-TAC, and if y'all can find any other photographs, that would be lovely. And so, is that gonna, is the two weeks gonna still be enough time? Defer?
Defer.
For the deferral, okay.
Defer.
So we're voting on...
Okay, we're voting on the substitute motion?
Substitute motion.
Well, Mr. Rouse joined the substitute motion, so if he's accepting the substitute, I think it automatically becomes the main motion, and you only have to vote once. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Five, can you close it? By a vote of 10 to zero, you have deferred the application until April 16.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have no appointments tonight. Is there any unfinished business right now? All right, under new business, we have a bittersweet moment here tonight. You know, we that sit at the diocese that represents the city of Virginia Beach, sometimes, you know, we don't always agree, but we are a family, we are elected together, and we are going to lose one of our members tonight, Shannon Kane, and she was appointed first in 2014, and she's been a very vital part of our family up at this diocese, in our community. And I'm gonna give other folks a chance to speak, but if I could speak of personal privilege, Shannon, not only is a colleague, but she's a dear friend, and I think there were a lot of friendships at this, you know, at this diocese. And I just wanted to personally thank you, you know, for, you know, the contributions you've made to being part of this team and representing Rose Hall in such a great way, but also, we can never hold back somebody from exploiting their passion. And you see, you know, a different path, and you have to take that path, because like I said, you don't want to be sitting on a front porch 10 years from now and say, boy, I should have done it when. So I think I can speak, speak on behalf of many, the people at this diocese and the commu, and the residents that, you know, thank you, God bless you, and you will always have friends at this city hall. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Jim?
Well, I've got to say that it's been, it's been a lot of fun working with Shannon on council, and I will tell you, we talk a lot about flooding and, and things like that, and there's a few of us that remember that Shannon was, was thrust front and center into flooding in, in Virginia Beach. When, when Matthew hit, it was in the Rose Hall District primarily where all the damage was, and, and Shannon was out there as, as a rookie council member, I mean, a year in, and, and she was out there, meeting with people, she, she got the organization, she got faith-based communities involved with, with volunteers, with everyone to work together, and I gotta tell you, there, there's been no greater advocate for, for flooding mitigation and, and for actually coming up with solutions than Shannon, so hopefully, when she's in Richmond, she'll be sending some of that money down to us, and I think we all, all to give her a list of exactly what we need from Richmond.
Money, 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 five cents.
And, but I, but I will tell you, all kidding aside, she, she has been an extraordinarily valuable member of, of the organization, and has been front and center on the most critical public enemy, number one that we have, and we talk about it, which is flooding, so thank you, Shannon.
John, please.
Well, I won't say that Shannon and I have always voted the same, but we have always had fun, and I've served with Shannon on the Virginia Beach Development Corporation as a liaison, and that has just been a, a great experience, and in its own way, it's been fun, it's been a challenge, but what I like about Shannon is that she's willing to hold people accountable, and she just doesn't go along to get along, and she speaks up when she needs to speak up. And she speaks up when she needs to speak up. And, you know, that is too often rare in public officials today for people to speak up when it's not popular and to really hold people accountable because it's uncomfortable. But we've had many great conversations on the phone. And I remember when she called me Saturday morning, I was getting ready to take my, I think it was, maybe it was Friday morning. I forget which, it was Friday morning. I was getting, my mom was staying with me. And I was fixing her breakfast at the kitchen table. And Shannon called and she says, well, first, she says, you're probably going to be mad at me. She said, I said, what about? And she says, well, I bought a house. And she says, and I'm moving out of the district. Well, the first thing is, I think, when someone buys a new home or goes somewhere that's your aspiration, that's always an exciting time. And you always want people to do what's in their best interest for their family. And that, and, you know, and this is a great job, but nothing's more important than your family. So I applaud Shannon for knowing what's really important in life. It's your family. And as long as we all remember that about our own families and the city as our family that we represent, we, I know she'll do well in Richmond. I, I look forward to coming to your victory. And, and it's been a pleasure working with you.
Well said, John. Anybody else? Shannon? Thank you.
I want to say something.
Oh, yeah, please.
Yeah, yeah. Just this lonely guy down here. No, I just want to say, since the, God, it's been what? Three and a half long months on council. As one of the younger members, I can honestly say, you're welcome and smile. It's helped me through many a days. And you're, you're approachable and you have a level head. I just want to say thank you for, for welcoming and helping me throughout this process on city council, and you will be missed, so thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Anyone else?
May I? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Rosemary?
Yes, and Shannon, we have campaigned together. And the thing is, yes, Shannon's always had creative ideas. And she's been tough, John, but she also has a very good, warm heart. And she's, she cares about charitable events and, and helping those who are in need. And she's, her creative ideas of the, was it the Workday Wednesdays where she would visit the small businesses? And, and it must be fun for a small business to have a council lady pop in and, and learn about what they're doing. And I was always impressed with all the different things that she would, that she would do.
Thank you. Yes, Louis?
Well, when we first interviewed Shannon to, for the appointment to city council, I, I thought of her, I, I took her as being this sweet, quiet, you know, really demure young lady who was really just going to sit there and vote, you know, when we had all these votes. But boy, was I wrong. But she's been a great person on city council. Spoken her mind openly. And showed great sense and great credibility in what she's done on city council. And I just want to congratulate you on that, Shannon.
Thank you, Louis.
And I wish you luck in everything. Thank you.
Jess?
I was going to save my remarks for Facebook, but everybody's doing it. I, I just want to say, one of the things that hasn't been said, and I don't think people talk about enough, is being a mom on city council is a tough job. And I just want you to know that when people told me I couldn't do it, I said Shannon does it.
Yeah, but you've got two.
Yeah, well, I didn't have to. And, but it is, it is a tough gig. I'm thoroughly impressed. Every time I've seen your son, he is well-adjusted and brilliant and kind. And I hope the best for my kids. And I just think it speaks to not only what kind of mom you are, but the caliber of person you are. And, you know, and to echo, she is not meek or meager. I remember the first conversation Shannon and I had. It was, it was very friendly and, and, and to the point. So I, I appreciate that in a person. I think that's good quality, and I just thank you for your service. Sabrina? I'll tell you later.
You know, save the best for last. Congratulations. You know, since the time that I've known you, and I've known you for quite some time, was on the NBC when I met you. And you were always very friendly and welcoming. I'll never forget that. You know, you make me feel really welcome. And so, you know, when I look to my left, you won't be there anymore. But I know it's for a greater purpose.
You won't have anybody to your right either.
You're an island now. You've got a lot of space. Only in Virginia Beach.
Shannon?
Turn the light on, Amanda, I'm ready.
Thank you all for, for the kind words. I wasn't going to do this. It's a bittersweet night. I'm really excited about my house. The painters are there and the carpet's coming. And Spencer has an orange bedroom. It's pretty interesting color, but he's pretty happy with that. So on the home front, things are going really well. And we're very blessed and appreciative and grateful that we could do that. These are my friends, my family now. You know, we spend in this part-time job twenty, thirty-plus hours a week. We're in citizens' homes. We're, we're in each other's phones. I mean, we're, we're always doing something for the betterment of the city. I thank the citizens for voting for me twice to be here. It's been quite the, the honor and the privilege to serve the city. Good God, I'm not supposed to do this, I'm sorry. But thank you all for the kind words. And I do want to leave with a few remarks. One is, even though I'm not going to be here for the budget, make sure you keep Princess Anne Plaza's Windsor Woods in the Lakes in the budget and in the CIP and continue funding that. And don't forget Lynn Haven Parkway, please. We've worked really hard at beautifying Lynn Haven Parkway and creating those plans. And the community has come together for that. So please don't, please don't forget that and keep that in the front of your mind. Until this next Rose Hall person is here, I'm counting on you guys to carry that torch and make sure that Lynn Haven Parkway project is seen through to its fruition. And again, thank you, everyone, for, for the kind words and the remarks tonight. And don't jinx me on my delegate race by, by saying that, all this good stuff tonight. But I hope to be able to carry the voice of this local municipality to Richmond and let Richmond know that what they do really does impact us. And we need their help and we need their remembrance that the locality is affected with each and every vote that they make. So I hope to be that voice and serve this city in a continuing capacity. But for the past five and a half years that I've been here, I thank you all for your support. And everyone watching at home, thank you so much.
Okay, at this point, we are adjourned. And we're going to turn the cameras off and we're going to have. And please let us know when we're ready.